You okay there, Mr. Pauling? Okay, then let's move to the administrative section, please. Type in motion. So, Mr. Walters, could I have a second? Mr. Kerr. Uh, Mrs. Walters.
Okay. Item A is the Southern West Virginia community and technical college student to perform observation as follows. Uh, Winter Underwood would be doing elementary observation at West Hamlin Elementary for the spring semester. Brittany Watts will do elementary observation and Hartz III K-8 through the spring semester. Item B, American Military Institute, which is an online college student, Bethany Tony Powell, to perform elementary observation at Hartz III K-8 for the spring semester. Item C, a contract with Vicki D'Amico to provide training for county staff in school-based Medicaid documentation, billing and reimbursement activities according to the terms of the contract. Item D, out of state travel for the following employees. I'm gonna read all of their names. Uh, but they will be, uh, their travel will be paid for through the Title IX funds. Also, uh, Shavel Pritchard to Chicago, March eleventh through the fifteenth, to attend the National Science Teacher Association Conference, and there are no funds needed from the county to, uh, for that travel. Item B, school volunteers who on occasion may also serve as best chaperones or provide transportation for students to and from athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, who have provided proof of private vehicle liability insurance and have completed volunteer orientation. Item F, it's a revised policy for thirty day public review and comment, uh, in regard to the recommended credit. It's policy fifty-four twenty-three. Item G, the extension of a contract with Frontier Communications for data lines at Duval Pre-K eight, Lincoln County High School, and Midway Elementary for the fiscal year beginning July the first of two thousand fifteen, according to the terms of the service agreement. Item H, the extension of a contract with Armstrong Utilities for data lines at Hammond Pre-K eight, Galloway Middle School, West Hamlin Elementary, Ranger Elementary, Hartz III K-8, the Central Office Complex, for the fiscal year beginning, uh, July the first of two thousand fifteen, according to the terms of the service agreement. And item I, adoption of the revised policies on a public review from January the twentieth of two thousand fifteen, and they are, um, thirty-four twenty, they're the first, and forty-four twenty, uh, then the next.
Uh, it's, I realize what these report personally, but would you just briefly explain if those two policies are just a few years?
Uh, yes, Bertie, would you, I think I'd ask you to go ahead and explain.
Oh, this, uh, the thirty-four twenty is relates to professional and forty-four twenty relates to service. Uh, it's the same policy, but just different for the different classifications of employees. And it relates to our retirees dental vision plan, and the change will, uh, be effective July one, two thousand fifteen, and the change will allow, um, a employee and employee spouse to pick up the dental vision and continue to get one check. So, both of them are receiving a county check, they give up one check, get dental vision, and one continues to get that check. And the one with the highest check has to give up the third check.
Thank you, Bertie. Bertie, I have a thought. I'm sure you plan to communicate that to the retirees at some point, right? Well, I talk about it too. It's more efficient.
Let's put it on Facebook.
More efficient coming from you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm what I would do.
I mean, it's on Facebook until July the first, so.
What I'll do, Steve, is I'll send out a, a new packet to those folks and give everyone the opportunity to sign up again.
Right, that's what we'll try to do, the same thing, but sometimes, you know, not everyone's on, you know, online and things like that. Okay, good. Any other questions of any of the administrative bodies from anyone? Okay, if not then, uh, call for question. All in favor of administrative section? Is that an all yes here? Finances, please, motion? Mr. Baker, second? Bertie?
Okay, uh, item A, scheduled employees is totaling nine hundred twenty-five thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents, and was available for public review at the county office. Item B, uh, budget supplements totaling seven hundred six thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars and seventy-two cents and, uh, attached. Item C, budget transfers totaling one hundred eighty-five thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents. And item D is the monthly financial statement for the month of January. And I would like for, um, just to point out on page one of the financial statements, you guys had asked me what the balance of the athletic CD account was, and I'm not sure that I gave that to you guys, but you can always see it on the, uh, statement of cash flow, the very last.
What page you going, Bertie?
One. Page one. I'm gonna show you where to see it all the time.
You gave that to us in an email.
Did I give, okay. I thought I had, but, but I'll just show you where you can always see where it's at. At the very bottom, it has the bank accounts.
What is the balance on that?
Uh, the balance is two hundred seventeen thousand five hundred seventy-two dollars and sixty cents.
Two seventeen, five seventy-two, sixty, right.
So, anytime you get your financial statement, you wanna see where a balance is, it'll be on the very line, because it's always separated out by itself.
Well, rumors are going around that it's gone, that we spent the money.
What?
And I said, that is not true, because Bertie will tell you at any time, and she tells us at every minute what that balance is, that they're saying we spent it.
They're saying wrong.
Yeah, they're saying wrong. It is, it is in, uh, CDs at First Century Bank, there's two separate CDs out there.
Okay, anything about finances from anyone? Any more questions regarding any of these things? Okay, if not then, uh, call for question on finance item. All in favor of both sides? Is that an all yes?
Yes.
So, the first one, section, type motion, please. Mr. Terry, Walters, seconds. Mrs. Walters is wanting to talk about.
Okay. Section A is the employment of short end or a long-term substitute professional personnel. Section B is the transfer of professional personnel. Section C, employment of, uh, service personnel. Section D, transfer of service personnel. Section E is employment of extracurricular personnel. Section F is the retirement and or resignation, and it's noted under the effective date, whether it's resignation or retirement. Section G, rare profit, uh, is the employment of, uh, professional personnel. And below, like, this. Okay. Okay, then, uh, the next section is the termination of professional personnel upon the recommendation of the superintendent to terminate the contract of the wowing professional personnel as provided for under West Virginia Code eighteen A dash two dash two, or eighteen A dash four dash seven A, and other applicable statutes as amended due to a general staff reduction, or due to a, uh, decrease in enrollment, and/or a decrease in federal and or state funding on Lincoln County schools, effective at the conclusion of the two thousand fourteen, twenty, fifteen school year. And recommendation under that section would be that Sarah Baumgartner, which is an itinerary counselor, half-time at Ranger, half-time at West Hamlin, which was a grant-funded position, the termination. Lauren Matthews, a Duval Pre-K eight, uh, fifth grade teacher. Kelly King, uh, a Duval Pre-K eight, second grade teacher. The next section would be transfer of professional personnel per Code eighteen A dash two dash seven, upon the recommendation of the superintendent to transfer the following professional personnel as provided for under the West Virginia Code eighteen A dash two dash seven, and other applicable statutes as amended due to a general staff reduction, due to a decrease in enrollment, and/or a decrease in federal and or state funding in Lincoln County schools, effective at the conclusion of the two thousand fourteen, twenty fifteen school year. And, uh, the first one would be Mary Grayley Ellis, a West Hamlin Elementary Title One teacher, transferred to Duval fifth grade teaching position. Ashley Bell, a Midway Elementary Title One teacher, to Duval second grade, uh, teaching physician. Marcia Starr from a Hammond Pre-K eight, third grade teacher, to a Hammond Pre-K eight second grade teacher. Next section, termination of service personnel per West Virginia Code eighteen A dash two dash six, to be placed on a preferred recall list, upon the recommendation of the superintendent to terminate the contract of the following service personnel, and place them on a preferred recall list, as provided for under West Virginia Code eighteen A dash two dash six, and other applicable statutes as amended, due to a general staff reduction, due to a decrease in enrollment, and/or a decrease in federal and or state funding in Lincoln County schools, effective at the conclusion of the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. Sherry Atkins, Hartz Pre-K eight, Special Education A. Christina Byrd, a Hammond Pre-K eight, Special Education A. Kelly Atkins, Lincoln County High School, Special Education A. Brittany Williams, a Lincoln County High School, Sign Language interpreter. The next section is a transfer of service personnel per West Virginia Code eighteen A dash two dash seven, upon the recommendation of the superintendent to transfer the following service personnel, as provided for under West Virginia Code eighteen A dash two dash seven, and other applicable statutes as amended, due to a general staff reduction, due to a decrease in enrollment, and/or a decrease in federal and or state funding in Lincoln County schools, effective at the conclusion of the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. Keisha Clay, a West Hamlin Elementary, Special Education A, would be, uh, uh, transferred to County Unassigned. Catherine Tripplett, Lincoln County High School, Special Education A, to County Unassigned. April Pridey, Hammond Pre-K eight, Special Education A, to Lincoln County High School, Special Education A. Sarah Adyer, a Midway Elementary Cook two, two, to County Unassigned. Elise Sykes, a Duval Pre-K eight, Cook two, to County Unassigned. And then to abolish a service personnel posting S fifteen dash forty, which is a bus operator, uh, Route twenty-six. Any questions?
Okay, question, Mr. Baker?
I have just a general question. We are looking to terminate Laura Matthews and Kelly King, and build their positions with Mary Grayley Ellis and Ashley, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Marcia Starr, is that right? No, no, Ashley Bell.
Yes.
How is the decision made, what's the decision based on, to terminate these two people who are in that position, and transfer the two people into those positions?
Okay. Personnel laws, kind of, uh, complicated, but, um, Title One funding is being decreased in, as we know right now, okay? What we have to do is we have to look at those, first, you look at people that are unpermitted, if someone's not fully certified, if they're not fully certified in that area that they're teaching, they're the first people that you have to either terminate or transfer. These people had other areas of certification, which is in elementary education. Then you look at the least senior people that are employed in the county. Just so happen, these, uh, Lauren Matthews and Kelly King were the least senior, um, teachers. So, these were senior teachers bumped into those positions.
So, the Title One teachers, they're the ones who have a lot of experience that take the Title One position, because it's, does it pay more typically, the Title One position?
No, it, it pays the same, but it requires a specialized certification.
And the funding of the Title One position decreases the ti, people with Title One, normally the Title One teachers have more experience and are able to effectively bump people with less seniority.
True.
And that's, that's what happens in this situation?
Yes.
Okay.
And these two people happened to be on a permit, and they had more seniority than some other people, but they were on a permit, so they were the next.
And that's just, I mean, is that how every?
Yes.
Okay. You don't know.
Okay, anybody have any other question about the individuals? I just have one. Bert, I noticed under the, those being terminated as service people, that they're on a preferred recall list, is there no such thing for professionals?
Yes. Uh, in their ladder, and it may have been just something we.
I was just looking at the heading.
Uh-huh, in their ladder, they are on a preferred recall list, automatically.
Okay. I just, I was just looking at the heading. I don't know which is different. So, they're on a professional recall list, and the others?
Yes, yes.
All right. Anything else in the personnel section? Call for call for question on favor of the personnel schedule, is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, all yes. All right, now, comments, concerns?
I'm sorry, question. We just, we just had an all yes vote to terminate or to eliminate the position of Mr. Baumgartner, who just had the hearing on the scene. Did we effectively just also roll a per hearing?
Okay.
Yes, I'm not sure.
Again, I'm learning if you got it.
I'm bumbling my way through.
Before, before rallying, just for clarification.
Hey, I don't need to hunt him down.
You may look at, you know, service personnel, it's different than professionals, and when I say here that these people are transferred to County Unassigned, service personnel, like when we terminated certain positions, they don't bump, okay? We have to look at the least senior people, and they are terminated, and we have to post those positions. That's with the last two sections, you know, that, these last people will have a job, we just don't know where, because with service personnel, they, they move all over the place.
The last five on the list will have a job somewhere, based on their seniority?
Yes.
Trying to confuse them.
Well, I just, well, I was afraid you'd look down there and ask me, well, why?
Since the, the vote was all yes, so you don't need to just transfer them?
Well, unless they would come back and ask for the.
For right now, you know.
At this point, we're not.
But if they go forward.
Then we would activate, not right now.
Mr. Pauling, thank you for your service, as always, to this county.
Well, I'd like to make a comment, if I'm allowed.
Go ahead.
Okay, well, last, so, I don't know, so, come on, I was trying to tell you, wait. Retired people were allowed this option, it was brought up here tonight, to take the dental optical forward, to get the county pension.
Yes.
Well, I mean, that's probably the one first one sent mine back then, I took at the insurance. And whatever it says they're gonna pay is not true, they pay over and above what they pay. My husband has had a lot of dental surgery.
Are you talking about the plan itself?
Yes, I mean, I can't get over how it pays. And I thought I had probably exhausted, you know, uh, cleaning, so I came here the other day, I get out my checkbook, you know, you always have to pay copay or something like that. Well, they said, well, we're not, we're not gonna pay you how much, we're not, we're not real sure how this is gonna pay on your cleaning, because I just paid one, like I said, and I said, well. So, then I get this notice from Delta Dental, and it paid every bill. Well, when they estimated Larry's surgery, they just estimated what he would have to pay, and we wrote a check for it, it was three thousand dollars. Well, he went over there, back for a, uh, visit right before Christmas, and when he, when he said, everybody just kept smiling, he was like, well, give your Christmas present for you, Lee, he's like that. And they just laughed. And when he, he said, do I owe anything to that? And I said, no, we owe you. They had overcharged him for what they thought the insurance paid would pay, and he got a check back from the dental office for a thousand dollars. I can't hardly believe all that.
It's good.
We still are not paying any, uh, we've paid plenty out of pocket, don't get me wrong, but I can't believe that they even gave us a thousand dollars back.
Well, that's what I think Bertie's said all along, is what a good plan is.
Well, okay, what I, what I thought, I was a little county pigeon, of course, I had to pay taxes on it, first of all, less than five hundred dollars a year, but I had to pay taxes. Now, I don't have to pay the taxes, and thirty-eight dollars were only in the bill of my car for gasoline, so what am I missing?
Bertie, you know, when you send that out to retirees, where they put a, you know, a little.
Well, I've gotta make. I have, I have not even, I'm going, maybe tomorrow, I have to get new, um, lens, or play the old thing, I don't know. So, I'm anxious to see, I, I, I've not tested this part first. I'm, I'm anxious to see how much everyone has to pay on this.
All of it upfront, and you get reimbursed, it was the same as ours, provision.
It depends on where, some places.
Yeah, they can get a sturgeon's, and there's a couple people, I get lens cracker, you know about that?
You'll have to.
Yeah, you just have to ask.
Pay, and then send them a receipt, that's.
Now, Delta will send the check directly to the vendors, if the vendor will accept the check, but a lot of them don't.
So, I'll probably have to pay a print, and then send it to.
You just get a copy of your receipt and all from, uh, lens crackers, and add a little form that you have, and they'll.
Now, I don't have a little form, you'll have to get one to turn, to send your one.
Those lens crackers will fill out those little panels on there for you, then you just send that to Delta, and they'll.
Did I get a form when I thought this insurance was, well, I thought it was on a.
It's in your pack, okay. And if not, you can just stop there, we can email you one day.
And if these people, that, of course, I think the first year, they have an option to.
Transfer into that, don't they? Oh, they can transfer anytime.
I thought they had to do it earlier, yeah.
Oh, well, to transfer back and forth, but, but anytime you wanna come in, you can come in.
Yeah, but for anybody that's gonna retire, they, I mean, they need to look at that, that, I just couldn't believe it was that, that good, and they even, we even got a thousand dollars back for Christmas.
Did he buy you something?
He gave it to all of the kids, every time he's got to the kids.
Bertie, did they increase it now, they pay on glasses? Because they paid more the last time, two years ago, than they did this time.
Yeah, they paid like.
Three, yes, three hundred, I think, maybe three sixty or three seventy.
Well, you know, there's a set amount for frames, uh, now, I have it right on my head, uh, and then there's a set amount for lenses, and it did, you know, single vision, double vision, and then there's another type, but it pays a different amount, so maybe you changed lenses, Carol?
I did, I did.
Okay, that's probably, because there's, you know, like I said, there's a set amount.
And they still pay that set amount, though.
Yeah.
Because it's hard to get a pair of glasses for three seventy.
Well, you probably had to get the center frames.
Keep that frames, that's all I.
Got a little express or whatever.
And then I get another pair of sunglasses, too, when I go. Last time I went, were, were three. Don't, don't get them on Facebook.
He's got it on that machine.
Oh, gosh, no. I said I told the rep, didn't I?
No, you didn't.
Well, I'm awful. Could you dictate that for me and send it to me, and I'll put it in?
I turned on record.
Your Nancy Polly testimonial.
Well, I'm gonna tell you what else happened to me, my husband, as, uh, was in the hospital for many, many days in Cavill, Huntington, probably most of you already know, and, uh, we get a lot of comment forums to fill out, and I, I filled out some while I was down there, people that were, I mean, that's, that's the hospital I've ever been in, if, you know, for the way we were treated, even the parking guy, he went, I took him a gift card back down for some rest, and it was like, anything we wanted, we got, the other time, and she said, there was a, on his comment forum, I made a comment about, you know, how well we were treated, and this and that and the other. And, uh, so my cousin works down there in medical records, and she sent me a email or a text or something, she said, it sounds like, we get a newsletter every month with one of their paychecks, and it has, you know, updates and what people said, and said, I know you wrote this, and I said, I couldn't, I said, well, I've written a lot of things, read it to me, or whatever she said, she sent it to me, actually, and I had written. It was like how far I traveled every day back there, but we still would, to this day, we choose that hospital, although we're, uh, double the mileage, because we're closer to Charleston, but then I had to go to the ER in, uh, September, and, uh, I went to the doctor's office, and they said, this guy said, Nancy, you need to go over to the hospital, motion to memorial, that's just what you think. And Larry, is he putting it down?
School board meeting, I'm not, I'm not.
Comment, and Cavill, but it didn't have a name, you know, but she said, I know you wrote this, and, uh, you know, how well we were treated and all that, so I made the, uh, opinion in Cavill. I guess I got an opinion.
Nancy, we're glad you dug yourself in a deep hole. No, we're, appreciate it, everybody. Okay, does anybody have anything else?
I do. She probably tried to get ahold of you today, okay, for your number and, uh.
Should be. I've been going past.
She got ahold of me.
Did she, okay, as long as she got ahold of somebody.
And they canceled that event up there, there was some mix-up about Family Resource Network had planned this activity at the high school.
Oh, yeah.
They didn't know it was election day.
Well, she tried to get it okay, but she called the state, and they said, no, they can't go on, I said, maybe they come in.
Well, they, they made calls today, the girls, uh, Ronda Currie and some others, to, uh, reschedule it, or to let the folks know that we're coming, that it was canceled.
Okay.
It's got a mix-up.
Okay, anybody?
Have you all talked calendar?
No, we haven't, just now entering the comments section. Any other members have anything here? Okay, I, the only thing I was gonna allude to, and maybe that's what Jeff's gonna talk about, are you talking about this year's calendar or next year's?
Kurt, Kurt, yes.
Go ahead, Jeff, maybe I won't have to ask any questions.
I roughed some things out, just as draft, but, you know, just some notes I had regarding kind of where we are now. First, let me just give you this year's calendar.
That's the one we have already.
You have it, then?
Well, my, we've got that passed.
You said this year, so I don't know.
This is not, it's advised in any way, right? It's sort of given out from school stuff.
They were gonna talk about changes.
Right.
Sir?
It's on my desk, Mark.
Is that right? Blown out there?
Well, not blown, heavily marked.
Heavily marked. All right, here is what I've put together, showing the dates we've closed thus far, the reason for the closure, and the makeup dates that correspond to those dates that we missed. So, we were out January the seventh, January thirtieth, February sixteenth, February seventeenth, February eighth, and February nineteenth, February twentieth, February twenty-third, and the twenty-fourth. Those first six days that we were out can be made up on those OS days, the first one being this Friday, February twenty-seventh, and then I heard you give a message on my phone. Uh, so, February twenty-seventh, April third, May first, May twenty-two, June fifteen, June sixteen, those are all days that was in the calendar, that's outside school environment days, which can be used to make up for lost instruction. The seventh day that we was out, February the twentieth, that day can be made up on April the thirteenth, uh, continuing head day upon our return from spring break. That exhausts all days built into the calendar that we had remaining to make up for lost instruction.
And we're correct that we can't use the planning day?
That's correct, that day is required to be, and it'll actually slide with the calendar now. That'll be our last day, whatever that would be.
So, the planning day isn't gonna be on the twelfth, it would be the last day that staff are there?
We had that day, uh, right before two OS days. Those OS days, if we not used them, everyone would've gone home.
Okay.
Teacher's last day would've been on that preparation. Teacher's last day would have been on that preparation.
So, okay, please.
Which brings us to these last two days, uh, February twenty-third, twenty-fourth, we've been out, and the board will need to make a decision as to when we will make those days up, that would be using any out-of-counter days that we have over spring break or the month of June. Beginning with June seventeenth up through June thirtieth, we can't use June nineteenth because it's a holiday, West Virginia day.
Is the cost to the board, to the school system, be different whether those days are made up on spring break or days are made up on the seventeenth, eighteen?
No, it'll be nothing.
All right, does anybody have any questions, Jeff?
I'll just say one thing, I've heard a lot of complaints about, they have already scheduled their spring break for vacations, they were gonna lose money. So I don't know.
Well, I mean, I have to say unofficially, you know, employees I've spoken to that's contacted me, asking questions, the majority have been in favor of avoiding spring break to make up for lost instruction, that's what I, overwhelmingly, I hear.
Well. But if we avoid spring break, then if we have flood just brain.
That's right.
Well.
Run that risk.
I want to make a comment in our staff meeting today, Mr. McKit was not very, uh, training. Um, the directors indicated to me that the teachers that they have spoken with at this, uh, uh, time are looking at, they would prefer to have kids during spring break because that's prior to our testing. If we, you know, and, I might get sound, you know, pass that along, because otherwise you're making up days after, uh, the testing, so, yeah.
Now, when school started, did not everyone, wasn't everyone told that there was the potential that spring break could be lost and it'd been bad weather?
That's correct, in a variety of manners.
Right, so, I mean, and I understand what Carol's saying, that those people have made arrangements, but they were also, realized there was the potential that that could change. Because this is what I wanted to talk about, not necessarily what we did, but we're gonna, as to we need to do some preparation soon. But the comments that I'm getting are mostly, they prefer it be on spring break.
To make up.
To make up the two days that are in limbo right now that they be at spring break. I have a testament argument that I think that's certainly valid and true, uh, but, you know, right now, and you verified one thing for me there, Jeff, is on this planning day, the last day of school, should it be on spring break, it'll be the fifteenth, okay? If we keep spring break as it is, then the last day would be, uh, the seventeenth. And then, if, should we have any more bad weather, and I know the Whoppers and I talked about the potential for flooding due to all the snow and all and melting. So, you know, we're looking at the seventeenth, if nothing, if we were not to miss another day, is that right, the seventeenth would be our last day?
Our last day, um.
If we didn't take any time off spring break, wouldn't it be the eighteenth?
It would be the. All right, I've got my, I'm looking at next year's calendars, I'm looking, okay, it would be.
Right now, it's the fifteenth.
The eighteenth.
Because the planning day got moved to the sixteenth.
Right now, it's the sixteenth.
I know, I know, that's what I'm, but I'm saying, if, not counting those days, okay, if nothing else, not counting those two days, I'm saying, the planning day goes to the sixteenth. So the last day would be the fifteenth, so if we don't use spring break, the last day would be the seventeenth. Is that right?
That P-day actually would be utilized on the seventeenth, that's right.
Okay, so the last day for students would be?
The sixteenth.
Okay, and that's not counting the two days, right, just right now?
I don't think I'm, that's not right, that, that P-day is gonna slide, it's gonna be your last day of instruction, so, or it'd be your very last day, so that P-day would actually slide to the sixteenth.
Now, that P-day's what's confusing me.
Well, what's gonna happen is that P-day, Mr. Priest, it would become a day of instruction.
Well, the twelfth, this is a call, the, the, June the twelfth would be an instructional day.
That's right.
So not counting these two days, we, no decision been made on, the twelfth is an instructional day.
Right, the fifteenth would be an instructional day.
Instructional day.
Sixteen P-day.
And sixteen P-day, that's what I'm saying, so right now, the last day, if we, as of right now, it's the fifteenth, okay? So if we, uh, were to not use spring break, it, the last day would be the seventeenth, is that right? If we now count in these two days that we haven't scheduled yet.
Well, we would have to tack on two more days, which would take in the seventeenth and the eighteenth.
Well, the seventeenth for students.
Right.
And the eighteenth for teachers, right? That's what I'm trying to say, so if we don't, do not use spring break, then the last day for students would be the seventeenth.
That's right.
Okay, and that's assuming that there's not any bad weather, no floods, or calamities of any sort, okay? It'd be the seventeenth, all right, so if we don't go to spring break, the last day would be the seventeenth, assuming nothing else happens. Now, if we were to have, I hope we don't, uh, a day of loss for whatever the purpose, then we're gonna scoot on over a little bit further past the seventeenth. So, I mean, this is something that we need to think about, everybody can kind of, you know, share what you think and one way or the other, but, um, if we're gonna do it on spring break, or one way or the other, I think we need to let everybody know here in the next week or two.
This CE day on April thirteenth, that's, we can't use that day, is that right?
It now becomes a day of instruction, we will, we will have students that.
It's the last one on there, right here.
Oh, okay, okay, can we get back?
Don't worry, we're not using this to P-day.
Makeup dates are on the right, and you're not showing May thirteenth as a makeup day. April, that, I'm still not seeing April thirteenth as a makeup day.
Yeah, it's the second one.
Okay, all right, okay.
Yeah, it's on this chart.
So when, when will the testing begin?
So the last thirty-six instructional days if you have it, and that's fluid, it moves as your calendar moves, so if we tack on the eighteenth end of the, of the calendar, then that window moves with them.
All right, let's assume that we make up these two days that we have to make up sometime during spring break week, when does testing begin?
Testing right now begins around the middle of April, it's, it's, it's like a week or two after we come back from, uh, spring break is when that window opens. I, I believe right now that date's around April the twentieth, is that right, Mrs. Lucas?
I'm saying it's wrong.
I, I believe that's the date, I'm shooting from the hip, but that's.
April twentieth, okay. But it's not very far off. Well, once again, we're, we don't have to decide this evening, but we need to decide pretty soon, in the next week or so, so everybody'll know eventually, yeah.
I would think if they would cancel, had to cancel out, say a month ahead of time, that they should be able to get their money back into.
Are you talking about softball?
I was talking about people who may have.
If they have.
Got reservations to go somewhere or something, I guess, right?
Right.
But, uh, you know, if everybody would just kind of.
Who want to go to Myrtle Beach every week?
All I was just gonna say, definitely, we, we meet twice, uh, it would have to be done by the seventeenth of March, but next, our next meeting is March the third, then we meet on March seventeenth, I think, you know, certainly we'd have to know but then, ideally, the third, which is our next meeting next week. But if not then, uh, the seventeenth is, I mean, it would have to be done by then, but ideally, I think the third would be best. That way, everybody, they know one way or the other, I can keep them or change them or whatever the case may be, and then at the end of the year, you know, you have the other half of those people that plan, have plans to do things then, so, uh, that's another one of the arguments, I'm planning on going wherever I'm going on June sixteenth, and if we don't use spring break, I can't go then. So there's two sides to that argument, uh, and I don't know the answer, but I, I'll certainly, uh, listen to whatever you all say, and then we'll put something on the agenda here soon. So everybody'll think about it, Jeff's.
So, effectively, you said the days of testing slide, so if the decision is made to extend the school year, then you really don't lose any days prior to the testing beginning.
That's right.
So it's six of one kind, half a dozen of.
That's how I see it.
Okay, okay, because that, that was a critical point to me, that I didn't want the kids to lose educational day before the testing began.
And this will affect your graduation date.
Oh, that's a great question, now graduation's locked, that was locked when we developed and you guys approved this calendar, so that date will not change.
Regardless of how the law says you can't go and graduate.
Except in this case.
Except.
And I want to clarify one thing, probably the, the teachers do not understand that that window moves with instructional days. You know, they just know when it's, we tell them when the testing starts and when it ends, they probably do not even realize that if it's at the end, that the testing window moves.
So that, and I know we've got some groups that, that have made plans even with us, informing everyone, you know, to be careful about spring break, and one of those groups is softball. Uh, and I've shared it with a couple of you, that, you know, that, that group of parents and coaches want to take the kids to Myrtle Beach and play the tournament, kind of as a reward for winning the state championship last year, so I know that group, and there's been a lot of those parents contacting, you know.
What days do they, is it, they go for the whole week or what?
I, you know, I do not have all the information yet, I, I'm not sure if it's on the front end of spring break, on the back end of spring break.
What if you find, well, why don't you make, yeah, and send that to us, Jeff.
I, I was approached also in regard to that issue, and their critical issue is if they're going to go, they have to make a thousand to fifteen hundred dollar non-refundable commitment. Really, so, I don't know what that drop dead date is, I don't know the dates that they would place, it's beginning, end.
Well, she said it's really past, but.
Well, ideally, we need to try to decide next week, uh, so everybody be thinking about that, in my mind, what I saw was taking the first two days as spring break, and, uh, and they would have three days of that week, and then the weekend, so they have an extended time, but once again, let us know when their schedule, team, or their games, or whatever their plans were for the day.
As soon as I get that information, I'll, I'll just shoot you all an email, let you know.
Jeff gets that, and everybody can decipher this a little bit, because it takes them to decipher, Mr.?
Could I just say something, as a, as a citizen, parent, close observer of board proceedings, only observer maybe of board proceedings, but, um, you know, if, if spring break isn't used this year, I think there's a risk that it won't be taken seriously, that, oh, every year they're gonna keep spring break, you know what I mean? Well, what I'm saying is, um, it was very clear in the calendars that the Lincoln Journal printed for all the teachers, all the staff, it was, you, you, you guys were very clear in three or four places about the risk of spring break, okay? Um, no, I, I don't have any vacation planned or anything like that, it doesn't affect me, and I sympathize with those who might be affected by it, but, you know, the risk was there. And I'm just saying, it may be worth keeping in mind that if, if you guys go out of your way to keep spring break, then every year you come to revisit this, they're gonna keep going back saying, well, you did it last year, why can't you do it this year?
Or anticipate that that's what you're gonna do.
You know, yeah, or, you know, it might be setting a precedent, whereas this is your first opportunity to make a point, maybe in one or two days. And say that it's not as sacrilegious people would like to think it is, that's just my five cents.
Jeff, I sent you a email, I know you just got back, since you, you know, because I know, you know, we're preparing, getting ready to prepare next year's calendar, or adopt one, I haven't seen the.
Would you like to see it? I brought you a copy, if you all would like to see it.
But, because I don't know if, you know, this year, we, you know, like in, what, Cavill and some of these counties, they started earlier than we did, correct?
Correct.
Okay, they, you know, and we took the approach, well, we worked out well last year starting a little bit later, so we're gonna gamble. So I don't know, these two proposed calendars now, if both of those have a later starting date or not?
The first calendar would actually bring, uh, our employees back a week earlier, they'd be brought back this year.
Okay, that's what I got to think about, that we really need to have, uh, be able to look at which would be better, you know, because in the event of these bad weather winters, that we need to be able to say, is it better to start sooner and then, you know, kind of get out about the same time, or do we just wanna, you know, do it like we did this year? But if you have two to kind of give both of those scenarios, that'd be great, that's what we have.
And, and if you remember, pre, our previous two years, we started much earlier than we did this year.
Right, that's what I mean, just something for us, for us to think about for next year.
Kind of watching some of the other counties, I've noticed too, I think Cavill just recently, if I'm not mistaken, just approved their calendar for next year, I believe they're bringing their employees back later this year, I think it's August twelve or thirteen, which is a much later start for them, last year, they, they brought their employees back around the third or fourth.
I don't know, I'm not advocating either way, just as long as we have an option to think about.
What do you think our start date, if we start a week earlier, what would that be?
I, I can, again, I can share this, if you'd like to see in advance of our public meeting, I know Sean will be here.
Yeah, go on, I, yeah. After record, that's fine, understood, me, my wife, my child.
There you go. Try to include you, Sean.
Thank you, Thanksgiving is all I need for a trip to Ireland. I know, that won't be touched.
This is calendar.
A.
A. Which would bring employees back on August the twelfth. This is not special paper, I'm used to, by the way, this, it's my printer, my, my printer is, it's deserved, I asked Mr. Daley to look into buying a new one for me.
So if they come back August the twelfth, then the kids won't start until?
They would be back on the seventeenth, any handout calendar would be.
And we're getting ready for our employees to, so, okay.
And that'll make it more, they'll think about it more too, if they know that the potential's there, and have them make up days too.
Yeah. Yeah, I see them, uh-huh, we voted already, we voted on late start, so these teachers will.
We vote for this tradition.
Yes, they'll vote, yes, yes, they voted on every, every year, it's their, it's Danny Davis' choice.
Yeah.
We need to do all of it, oh, oh, okay.
I mean, I mean, I never want to discuss these calendars at length on the third, but this just gives you a little preview of.
On the third of what month?
Third of March.
The next week, next week.
Is that, you're away, right?
Yeah, next week, it's published today.
When are the public hearings?
Pardon, so.
Thirteen, March third, March seventeenth.
Oh, okay, you're gonna have a public hearing on March third, the same day as the board meeting?
Yes, it will be part of our board meeting, just like we did last year.
And then the seventeenth's the same, it's part of a board meeting?
Yes.
So anyone that wants to be a part of that forum, they come to the board meeting?
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Sean was printing us something way, now we gotta thank him.
But you can see that calendar A, we bring, you know, brings employees back on the twelfth, they have three days to get ready, they also have the weekend, there's a lot of teachers, principals that like to come in and work over the weekend before the kids come back, so, but actually, you know, you're looking at giving folks five days that are, school's ready, classroom's ready, and they, and there would be a two, two-week Christmas break in there, a three-to-two week Christmas break.
And I see the graduation date is, there's a difference there, isn't there?
Uh, yes, uh, the over Memorial Day holiday on a Friday.
Yeah, but I mean, on B, they're graduating on June the third.
Right, this calendar B is more in line with the calendar that we have this year, it, it brings employees back almost on the same day.
All right, okay, I'll get rid of that something there.
Oh, okay, I was looking for some kind of key, color code key, and it's what they all get.
Again, now, this is draft, there may, there may be some moves in there somewhere.
All right, so we'll talk about that next time, right, okay, so everybody kind of be thinking about this year's calendar, or next year's calendar, I think we can talk about those things next week. Okay, everybody, okay, if you think more on the calendar, anything, other comments from?
No, other than we hope to have school at regular time tomorrow. No, other than we hope to have school at regular time till our coming.
We're going to.
And unless you get an early call from us, we'll be right on time.
All right.
And hopefully, we'll be in school every now and then, this point off.
No flooding?
No flooding.
Okay, all right. So nothing else, we're gonna move to the next item, which is item ten. That's a superintendent's evaluation. We established goals back before September the fifteenth, and, uh, this is, uh, Lucas met with us in executive session. We were both over here a month or so ago. I've, I've lost track of time. And, uh, we're now at the point where we're going to, uh, work and finalize that, uh, the evaluation this year of the superintendent. So, uh, I'd like to have a motion, please.
I'll move.
Ms. Smith made a motion, second. Mr. Baker seconded, and seven fifty.
Okay, motion, Smith, second, Baker, to meet in closed session at seven fifty p.m. to review and discuss the pile rankings and comments regarding the superintendent's evaluation. To meet with Superintendent Lucas regarding the evaluations provided for in Western Code eighteen dash four dash six. Am I bugged?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Okay.